All right, the time is now 7:00 PM. We are at 100 State Street, Beloit, Wisconsin, in the City Hall Forum. It is time for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Beloit City Council. I would like to call it to order and roll call.
Roll call shows our councilors are present.
Accept.
Oh, except Counselor Lukey.
Thank you. Item two is Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is Special Order of the Day and Announcements, IIIA.
Introduction of new city manager Lori S. Curtis Luther.
Yes, this is a first meeting and first day of work for our new city manager. We found Lori through an exhaustive process. After speaking with her many times in our interview process, I'm absolutely convinced that she's one of the most qualified people that I've ever met. Lori, you have utmost confidence. I'd like to feel free to address the people.
So much. I just want to share that she's not-
Oops. Alpha phony, I have to do my job.
I have to wait for that. Thank you very much. It is absolutely my pleasure to be here. My entire family will be relocating here very soon, towards the end of the week. And after my first official day, I can absolutely tell you that this was the perfect choice and I think an excellent fit for me professionally and personally, for my family as well. Following in the footsteps of someone like Mary Arft is obviously a very big challenge, but I believe with the council's guidance and with the staff at my side, we will be able to continue the positive momentum that Beloit's enjoyed and see that continue into the future. So, thank you very much for hiring me. It is my privilege to be here and to serve the citizens of the city of Beloit.
Thank you. Also, we have another Lori that has joined us. Our new city clerk, Lori Stotler, who was formerly the county clerk, comes with an amazing level of credentials and qualifications herself. Lori, would you like to introduce yourself? You can come up to the podium or...
Good evening. I would just kind of echo what Lori's saying. After a long first day, I'm positive that I made the right choice for this position and I look forward to learning everything from a very capable staff and doing the best I can for years to come. So, I'm excited to be here. Thank you for having me.
And thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item three C.
Presentation of the receipt of Rock River Trail Coalition Award.
City Manager Emeritus.
Well, I'm very, very happy to be here this evening, ladies and gentlemen, on this side of the dais. This is my first official presentation as the city manager emeritus and I was very pleased to personally welcome Lori here at 8:00 this morning. She was here full of enthusiasm. I can tell you, we've had a full day of orientation activities. The orientation book is about two and a half, two and three-quarter inches thick and we were at it till 4:30 and it didn't scare her off. So, that was a real good sign. And she was mastering the material, so I'll add my welcome Lori as well. It's great to have you here, believe me. This is one small piece of business left over that we didn't get to finish at the last couple of meetings. The Rock River Trail Coalition invited delegation from the city to attend their annual dinner meeting and they presented us with their 2015 Protector Award. We were very pleased to get this. As you know, we've been an Echo municipality since 2007. We've done a full range of Echo municipality-related projects from e-government to solar energy, running with alternative fuels, and we've done a lot of Green Belt work. There were three major policy initiatives that the city has undertaken in recent years that contributed specifically to the award. The first item was the Green Belt work that the city has done merely along the Rock River, which of course is what the coalition's primary focus is, but to a lesser extent also along Turtle Creek and protecting the shoreline, protecting the floodways, removing homes and other buildings out of the floodway. And so, that was one of the three initiatives specifically mentioned. The other one was the shoreline stabilization, building of seawalls, what have you, up and down the river to again, the shoreline from erosion, protect the river, protect the city from flooding. And the other one, sounds a bit indirect, but also very relevant to protecting the quality of water in the community and that's our winter storm program and snow removal initiative. Going to the liquid brine program, the pretreatment program has dramatically reduced the amount of salt and other road control, ice control chemicals that we put on the roads throughout the winter season. That's made a huge difference in the quality of the water, particularly in the Rock River and its tributaries. So, those were the three policy initiatives that the city has carried out that they specifically wanted to acknowledge and that is on the plaque, which I will leave with the city clerk so we can find a place of honor in our trophy cabinet out here. But I also wanted to mention this feather because when we saw it, I said, wow, that's really neat. There's a feather in there. And we got it back home, we started looking at it. This feather is hand painted and the artist's signature is on the feather itself. So, that's a pretty unique piece of artwork. I've never seen anything exactly like it and so, maybe someday if you need it, that might get the city out of hock, you never know. So, with that, once again, ladies and gentlemen, it's a pleasure to appear this evening on this side of the dais and I just wanted to make sure this got officially presented. So, thank you very much for your kind attention.
Thank you. All right. Item four would be public hearings. We have none, so item five is Citizens Participation. We've reached the point in the meeting for members of the public to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us or may come before us in the future. The council will not act on any requests this evening unless an item you're speaking about is already on our agenda, but we may act on requests at a future meeting or may refer the speaker to staff for assistance. We ask that you hold your comments to three minutes or less and avoid making personal attacks. We do have a couple of sheets. Looks like Mr. Bill Dorr. Please approach the podium, state your name and address. And I know since you're speaking for several other people, I won't hold you to three minutes, so...
When have I been held to three minutes?
No one, no time that I'm aware of, but...
Just a couple of things. And one of the things, Lori, to start out was to welcome the new city manager and that you've chosen Beloit. And it was chosen for me at four years old. And then at 20, I conned someone into marrying me and we stayed ever since. So, it's a good choice. It's a very good choice. I do want to welcome you and thanks again for choosing Beloit. I really am very, very happy and proud. The second thing I would just want to bring up is like, I talk about like inner-city initiatives and sometimes I feel agenda on the item for the council on the basis that gives us a chance to update the standings of ordinance, bike routes, stoplights versus stop signs. What do the neighborhoods need? It's one to talk about in the past. We would suggest something to the council, an idea or an ordinance, and the council would appoint a member and the staff would appoint somebody to serve on a committee. We'd get committee members, would be interested people and property owners. It would have the ordinance for drafting the ordinances or whatever we were looking to do. Then it would go to plan and if it ever got out of plan, it would then maybe be two or three readings at the council. And at the end, the council would vote for that thing, up or down, whatever the item would be. Historic preservation, believe it or not, came up twice to the city council and was rejected. At the time when I was asked to actually serve, we had rewrote it and it passed through the council, but it took three different times to get it. This is how historic preservation, downzoning our neighborhood. I served on a committee for recycling and there was SOS, Save Our Streets. We had ordinances for the college to put offices in homes. And all this worked through this process. And from this procedure, the people that worked on the committee, some of them ran for city council boards, but they felt a part of the solutions for Beloit. So, Park Avenue Apartment is being sold to an investment firm from Colorado. There's 54 units with a possibility of maybe 108 cars. They have 30 parking stalls in a garage where they also keep the garbage for the 54 units. There's no land. That building butts right up to the property lines. There's no outside garbage bin with cement and that goes right down there in the lower level too, along with the cars. So, yeah, and that doesn't leave until trash day. So, if there's 30, 108, we got possibly 78 cars that are now going to go back to parking on our streets. I would like to request a committee with a councilperson and staff to draft an ordinance similar to Waukesha, Wisconsin, about permit parking between the hours of 3:00 in the morning and 5:00. That could be, and from the committee, we can discuss if it's the whole Beloit or if it's neighborhoods or whatever, but that's what the committee would do, would be to come up with that idea, take it before plan and proceed that way. That's how it used to be done. I would love to get back to that and just to start the conversations we need to have about neighborhoods and it's about making Beloit a great place to live. I know it's a corny routine to sit there and say, you know, that we're being faced with Park Avenue Apartments again. Okay, fine, you know, I have to deal with it. When we, when they were there, I always thought in two years, there were six pages of police reports. Different color the whole time. Who's to say that we're going to go back to that again with the new people? Talking to the building inspector, he said they weren't going to fix the elevators. They were just going to clean it up. There's no reason to put sprinkler systems in there. It's somewhat discouraging as a neighbor and knowing how important that this was. Back in November, I'd given you all a report and talked about the ordinance on parking. And there's absolutely been nothing, a public forum, an open time for people to talk about this situation. So, I'm not asking us to deal with Park Avenue, I'm asking us to deal with parking. I'm asking that we go forward with some kind of idea or some kind of solution to this thing and that when I talk about inner cities, I believe there's solutions for Maryland. I believe there's solutions for Hackett. I believe that that's, and it starts very simply, by getting people involved in committees, presenting their ideas, letting it go through the process and whatever way, you know, if it needs to be tweaked like the historic preservation, it can be. We can make it fit for us. I just want to go back to those days and I look forward to it and in a very positive way. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And you're some of the, your statements are well heard here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next person, Christopher Hoover. Please approach the podium and state your name and address.
Hi, my name's Christopher Hoover. I attend, we attend, uh, Black Turner High School. We are here to propose, uh, to raise minimum wage. For my, for our political science class, we had to research about an issue that we could change. The issue we chose to propose was the changed minimum wage for Beloit. A growing number of cities, including Seattle, are examining costs or benefits of implementing citywide minimum wage laws. We focused on Seattle and how their minimum wage was raised to 15 an hour. We researched about the minimum wage change and how it affected the city. We had several people and asked them if they would like the minimum wage to be higher for Beloit. We also researched about standard of living in Seattle compared to Beloit, so therefore, my partners and I came to an agreement proposed also have significant impact on businesses and how they operate. There are plenty of reasons why the minimum wage should be raised and that includes economic stimulus. Raising the minimum wage means minimum wage workers have more money to spend, which means more money ripples throughout the economy as minimum wage employers are able to spend more. More opportunity for jobs. If these minimum wage employers are spending more, then businesses are earning more and more employees to keep up with an increased sales for the minimum wage employees who are buying more. Reduced expense for social programs. Employers surviving at minimum wage are also often the same people who must rely on support of government-run social programs to support themselves and their families on such a small income. Raising minimum wage means some of these people would be able better to support themselves without leaning as heavily on social programs and this would ultimately mean lower taxes or relocation of these funds to support other needs. There would be decreased turnover rate. Employees who are making higher minimum wage feel more comfortable and satisfied in their minimum wage jobs, meaning they are less likely to quit. This means there would be a lower turnover rate, which results in fewer expenses to hire and train new employees. And inflation. The federal minimum wage needs to be ordered to account for inflation, which raises every year in the minimum wage. This has only been risen three times in the past three decades. There's also some cons of raising it would be like layoffs and price increase. And fewer hiring, competition will intensify and applied inconsistently.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time.
Do we have any other persons wishing to come forward and speak under Citizens Participation? Second call for persons to come forward and speak under Citizens Participation. Third and final call for persons to come forward and speak under Citizens Participation. Hearing none, I'll close the Citizens Participation part of the agenda and we'll move on to the Consent Agenda, item six. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items unless the council approves, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda. Do we have any councilors wishing to remove anything from the Consent Agenda? Hearing none, the Consent Agenda consists of items 6A through 6E. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by DeForest and seconded by Kinkade. All in favor of approval of the Consent Agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 6-0. Item seven is Ordinances. There are none. Eight appointments, we have none at this meeting. Item nine is Counselor Activities and Events. And we will start with Counselor Hendricks.
Hello. I've missed the last meeting. I heard I dodged a little bullet there. So, this was a short, so yay. We attended, several of us, the Memorial Day Parade, but I won't talk about it because Counselor Kelly wants to speak on it. On Saturday, I was able to attend the Rock County Christian School graduations. A smaller class, but it was a really fun ceremony. The speakers and the students were very proud, so I was happy to be there. Beloit Memorial's graduation is this Saturday, so I'll be happy to be there. I've got several of my students from my program, so it'll be good to see them and my cheerleaders. Get them out of here, no. The Summer Gospel Jam, Visit Beloit, will be hosting our first annual, I'm saying annual, like we'll do it again, we'll see how it goes. Our first annual Summer Gospel Jam on Saturday, June 20th. It'll be from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, all day. You don't have to stay the whole time, but you should. It'll be great singing, lots of vendors, food vendors. There'll be people selling things. It's a free family event at Riverside Park. Gospel music, if you've never heard it, listen to it, come out, enjoy. There'll be local choir singing. We have a gospel singing competition, Beloit's Sunday Best. So, we'll see, out of 10, we'll see who is crowned Beloit's Sunday Best. There's a cash prize too. And then there is Mississippi Mass Choir, which is an award-winning choir that will be here performing for that event. So, that's going to be at the same weekend as Back to Beloit, which is another event that happens yearly or biannually. And so, they'll be in conjunction with that. And then, oh, that's it, because I'll let, and I'll talk about that. Thank you.
I'm not going to let Counselor Lukey sit down before I call him. He showed up at just the right time to tell us what he's been doing for the last few weeks.
My apologies for being late. Studying city governments and other lands. And I missed the bus for the first time. I had it all set for the 4:00 bus and the Van Gelder bus was filled and about 10 people are there waiting, so I got the 5:30 bus. So, I apologize for being late because I definitely wanted to be here tonight for the entire meeting to welcome our new manager and say goodbye to Larry, but I'm here, so let's get on with the show.
All right. Counselor Kelly.
Okay. Well, Regina left the parade for me. So, we walked in the parade and Regina and I carried the banner all by ourselves. We had this very nifty banner that Pam had made for us. She was there at the parade with her four children, who all behaved very well. Yes, they did. They were wonderful. Chita was at the parade and Chuck was at the parade and both Chucks were at the parade, so was Marilyn. So, we're only missing, he was out of town, so we gave him a pass. For the last two weeks, I've been doing pretty much end-of-school stuff. We've had band awards and classic awards and pre-graduation awards and so, I'm still graduating from high school in the sixth, so very excited about that and that's pretty much it. And I'm so glad everybody's here today. This is like friendly faces. I usually don't feel as comfortable, but now that I can look out and see people that I know, it's, makes it a little easier. So, that's it.
Counselor Sladeker.
I was able to attend the golf community meeting to learn a little more about Kruger Golf Course. So, that was very helpful. I also went to the EMS Open House, which was for the EMS and the fire station was open, had the helicopter and all the emergency equipment. That was very helpful and got to see everything that they utilize. And I attended the closing of Morgan School. Fran Fruzen was very honored to have the school named after him, you know, with all of his accomplishments and education and very honored. He almost broke down in tears, so honored. So, that was really a great event. And then I also was in the parade. And that's all.
Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I also attended the EMS Open House and appreciated having the opportunity to talk to several of our firefighter paramedics and the kids had a blast climbing into the equipment and one highlight of that was speaking with one of the three doctors that staff the MD-1, which is a fantastic resource that we have for our residents throughout Rock County. And so, what that means is if there's a critical injury out in the streets or out in the home and they need an immediate doctor, that literally a doctor travels to you instead of the ambulance time that's lost getting that person to the hospital. It's absolutely incredible, the resources that our residents have. So, I was pleased to be able to have a very long conversation with one of those docs who was there and see the incredible equipment that he had. He literally had a mobile ultrasound. I mean, everything staffed in this, kind of like a station wagon. It was absolutely incredible. So, we are getting top-notch care, which is very exciting. Thanks to our incredible fire staff, paramedic staff for collaborating to make that happen. I attended the State of Rock County Health presentation. The thing that's very exciting about that, Rock County Health isn't doing so great. We need to keep working on that. But the thing that was exciting about it was this was a collaboration of all of Rock County's hospitals. So, all of Rock County's hospitals came together, which is pretty incredible, along with the Health Department and UW Extension to study the issues that impact the health of Rock County residents and develop strategic plans for how we can all work on that together. I think that's pretty good news to be able to share that collaboration. I also was able to attend two different graduation ceremonies. I always make a point of being sure to attend graduation ceremonies that maybe aren't in the mainstream or the highlights. And so, I was particularly pleased to and honored to attend Black Hawk Tech's GED graduation program and also Community Actions Pass Program graduation. They're very small graduations with between 10 and 15 students, but these are students that have really had to overcome incredible obstacles to achieve graduation and I feel like they deserve to have an elected official at their graduation ceremonies as well. So, I was pleased to be able to make the time to attend those graduations. And then finally, I want to do two things. One is to share that I am absolutely tickled with Lori Curtis Luther choosing Beloit. As much as we chose her, she chose Beloit and I'm thrilled that her family is invested with her in our community and you are never going to leave. You're going to love it here. We're not going to let you leave.
I want coffee in a minute.
And then with that, of course, is the bittersweet, having to thank Larry. Larry, I would like to thank you for your dedication and service to our city. We haven't always agreed on everything and that's fine, but I have the utmost respect for you and have never, ever doubted for a minute that you love this city and wanted what's best for you. Thank you so much for all you've done above and beyond for the city and its residents. Absolutely. And then finally, I just also would like to thank Mike Trumita for his service. He also retired just this past week. And so, we've had some incredible turnover. Some of our best and brightest employees have left and are leaving us, but we're filling them with incredible people. Lori, we are so thrilled to have you. When I heard, I was like, yes! Because she's done such an incredible work. I've gone to quite a few county board meetings and your knowledge of professionalism and your personal commitment too. I've been really impressed with some of the committees that I've sat on. For example, the Behavior Health Redesign Steering Committee, when you came and just personally and on your own time came to share your concern and commitment for the welfare of our residents. So, we're thrilled to have you as well. So, I'm sorry we're so long-winded, but just a lot of gratitude for what incredible community that we have and incredible people that live in our fine city. So, thank you.
Counselor Kinkade.
Well, these last two weeks have been very unusual for most of us. The best of times and even better times. With Larry moving on and us having a new manager was, obviously, we all agree that a plus. I got to know, get to know the family at the parade. And I want to share with you that the four children were there and the younger ones carried bags of candy, large bags. And I realized that I, this was the third parade I had been on. I'd never brought candy. And how did these kids know that? So, they were kind enough to give me some. And when we turned around the corner, I found my physician, a couple of pieces of candy, he kind of, he was very nice. But it was, so Larry, the best to you. In the festivities and things that were going on last week, I learned things about you that I didn't know and was delighted to hear and to talk to you about it. And with Judith, I, we first met and I think it was where you were training folks for helping out with the recall election. Was that it? It was probably one of the most complicated endeavors. Everything was, I mean, she handled it, it was magic the way you did it. Whatever it was, it was, a lot of people were there. We were from all over the county and she was the CEO of that room as she was trying to tell us how, what had to be done and how we could do it. Finally, with Judith Ellison is, we'll have to go back to the deputy-
I'm Jaleen.
Julie, I'm sorry.
Judy's been here before too.
Okay, I apologize. Both of you are going to have to go back to the deputy's chair and we will look forward to those times when you get here. We certainly would welcome you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is not it. That parade, folks, next year, get there. It's a lot of fun. And it didn't rain either. Thank you.
All right. Well, Councilor Lupke, he's asked to say a few more words, so I'll certainly grant that.
Thank you, President. Lori, I wanted to welcome you also to Beloit. And you've made a very wise choice and we're glad to have you. Your past accomplishments are well-known. I also wanted to thank Larry Arth, decade of service to Beloit. The word renaissance, I don't say too often, but it has gone through a renaissance. It's been because of people like Larry Arth and people like Bill Doran and others who've volunteered in the city. But Larry has been the quiet cheerleader who has shown a lot of humility, who has had all the facts at hand, who's amazed me at times with his knowledge of all the departments and doing it without micromanaging. Having been in work like this myself for many years as a, first a teacher, then other jobs up through a principal in the schools, nothing we liked less than somebody who micromanaged and told us how to do our jobs when we knew how to do our jobs. And Larry was on top of everything and he let people do their jobs, which is fantastic. I first saw the guy before I got in City Council at the YMCA. I saw this big guy putting on bike shorts and stuff. He was quite a biker. And I said, "That's our city manager hanging out with the common folk at the Y. This is all right. This is good." And over the years, prior to becoming a councilor, it just was neat seeing Larry at all types of events, a farmer's market, everything else. Larry plans on staying in the city. It's a city he helped to renovate and bring about. So the word renaissance is, I think, meant for you. So thank you for 12 years of wonderful service and it was a pleasure working with you.
All right. Well, I don't normally have to add after everyone's spoken about everything, but I did have a chance to emcee the retirement reception for Larry past Friday. 140 people, members of the community, came to wish him well. You know, this is an unwritten fact because Larry, for 12 years, has been there, has known everything that was going on. It has had his finger, has been the go-to guy for all manner of things civic. He taught me almost everything I know about public administration and city government. I'm going to miss that more than I can tell you, Larry. The only thing that makes this palatable in any fashion is that you're going to stay with us in the city, that you're not going to run off someplace. You know, I'm sure we'll have a chance to talk, get your perspective on this. And I'm going to, but I'm going to miss you in this role, but only so much because I am absolutely convinced that we have the right person in the right spot now. So thank you. This is the optimal situation. There's no, there's nothing to feel terribly bad about. There's the bittersweet loss of, you know, a good friend, only to know that a person I expected to become a friend, you know, moving into the position. So thank you very much. And Lori, this is interesting that we're having so many people come in that I can feel the air blowing through the window, the fresh air of change. And thank you for joining us in this incredible journey. So that's all I have tonight. Marilyn, would you like to add something?
Being new, you know, I don't know everything about Larry, but I do appreciate the little bit of time that I've had and opportunity to be able to serve with you and you've helped me along this new adventure. And I also want to welcome Lori. I think a lot of you, and I think you'll be very beneficial to the city, so I welcome you as well. Thank you.
Do you have anything else that anyone wants to add? Given the circumstances tonight, I'm...
We picked up another fantastic science teacher at the high school.
Yes, good. All right, then. We'll move on to item 10, the city manager's presentation, 10A. Jaleen.
Oh. Library reading summer program.
Yes, Mr. Director.
Okay. Mr. President, council members, city manager Curtis Luther and city manager Emeritus Arth. I too would like to thank you. You helped very much in my transition over these last six months. And there's a reason that Larry and Karen as well, that their names are in three locations around the library. So they've been very good, excellent supporters of the library itself and myself. So it's always a pleasure to stand before you and to underline yet one more way that the Beloit Public Library is making a great city even greater. There we go.
You're working on it.
There we go.
There we go.
Okay. As you know, the library board members who are here as well, the library board has set itself in a strategic plan, three focal areas, three areas of concentration, literacy, jobs and careers, and quality of life. And these are not three discrete or unrelated areas. They're very much interconnected. We don't hop from literacy, try and, you know, do a couple of things in literacy and then jobs and careers, touch a toe in quality of life, and then back to literacy. They're very much interrelated and they build one upon the other, but it all begins with literacy. As you well know, if you don't have the ability to read, it's very difficult to learn. And so we read to learn, we learn to graduate, we graduate to get good jobs, and hopefully parlay that into careers. As employers well know, that the only reason they're going to come to town and set up a business is if there's an educated and skilled workforce here. And employees know that if the quality of life isn't such that they can achieve their aspirational goals, not only for themselves but also for their families, that they would not stick around in Beloit. And so the quality of life is also a key component of that. So all three of those build upon one another, but it all begins with literacy. One of the things that you see when you come to Beloit is the gateway from the south. When you enter the south, it's the gateway to Wisconsin. When you come in from the north, though, I think it's very profound that when you come down 51 and you look up to your left, the hill, up on top of the hill, there is the Beloit Public Library, there's Black Hawk Tech, there's Cardinal Stretch, there's Community Action with its educational offerings as well. You look to the right across the river and there's Beloit Memorial High School, which can represent all the K through 12 school system across the city. And then you look, you go a little further, you cut across the river again, and you have Beloit College, again, representing the higher education. It all begins, though, with literacy. And we're going to, I'm going to introduce Tina in just a moment to talk about the summer library club, the summer reading programs that are going on at the Beloit Public Library. This is all the library cardholders in Beloit or for the Beloit Public Library and within the city limits. Eighty percent of the population, 30,000 out of 37,000 residents of Beloit have Beloit Public Library cards, eighty percent. We can do better, but is that something to be proud of? Absolutely. And of those eighty percent, 24 percent are under 18 cards, juvenile cards. It's a significant amount. Twenty-seven percent, I'll just say seventy-four percent, we'll cut to a different stat, seventy-four percent of those under 18 in the city of Beloit have a library card. Another, that's saying a lot, again, not only for the parents, families, but also for the children. This is one of the most important reasons that we have the summer library club, that we have the activities that we do at the library over the summer. We know that, everyone's familiar with a lot of the different statistics. Everyone who's a parent certainly knows what happens over the summer. It was last Friday at Lori's retirement reception. When he was speaking, he talked about, he was happily welcoming Lori into this position and he was very confident that she would keep, quote, "the momentum going." And that also plays on something else Andrew Yonkey had said earlier about the same kind of thing of keeping the foot on the gas. Otherwise, what happens is the city starts to fall behind. Behind, it starts to stall, it loses its momentum. And the same thing happens with people. So the kids, reading during the year, they're getting their school, they cram up until the end of the school year. And all of a sudden, if the foot is taken off the gas over the summer, we know what happens. There's a summer slide. They start to fall behind on their reading, their math, et cetera. So the library steps in. We know that during the school year, when the doors close on Friday, it's the library that's there on Saturday and perhaps soon in the future on Sundays as well.
Yay!
And then when the schools close their doors at the end of the school year, it's the library that's there as a bridge across the two school years. So the summer slide and the library programs that step in to put their foot on the gas to keep the momentum of learning going forward. So I'm going to introduce Tina Kokuski is the head of our adult services as well as our teen librarian. And Jenny Shamba is our children's librarian. She couldn't be here tonight. And Tina is going to take us through all the activities, again, that help keep the foot on the gas.
The Beloit Public Library has a lot in store for all ages this summer when we start the annual Summer Library Club on June 13. We are participating in the collaborative summer library program and will be using three different but related themes for youth, teens, and adults, all having to do with heroes. The youth theme is "Every Hero Has A Story," and it is a nine-week event starting June 13 and ending August 15. Kids will be able to read for fun and prizes. There are three reading periods lasting three weeks each, and reading two hours each week will result in a prize at the end of each reading period. The prizes are a Reading Wrist Band, a library card holder, and a bookmark. Special programs and performers will be featured during the nine weeks. Tuesday Tales and Treats are for kids ages six to 12 and will feature stories about different heroes each week. Wednesday Story Times for kids ages six and younger are our most popular storytime and will continue through the summer. Wednesday Tween Times are for kids ages eight to 13 and will feature fun and informative programs, including a visit from the Beloit Fire Chief Brad Liggett. A K-9 Hero will be there, a Big Hero Six movie party, and robotics workshop. So we're touching all areas of what kids are interested in. Poolside Stories and Baby Play Dates will be extra special this summer because we're also using a hero theme then. And finally, Family Fun Time will include performer David Stokes and his animal friends, The Incredibles movie, superhero Olympics, and The Dancing Dogs. You can't miss that, an event for all ages. Kids will have opportunity to design a superhero library card. And it's not going forward. There we go. Kids will have an opportunity to design a superhero library card, and we will use the winning design to create actual library cards to be used during Library Card Sign-up Month in September. We'll also continue the Free Meals for Kids program this summer during the week of August 17 through 21. This program is sponsored by the Beloit School District and the Salvation Army. There will be a superhero photo op where kids compose with a cardboard cutout against a cityscape background, and parents are encouraged to take photos of the kids as a superhero. The Vagabond Bears are very popular, so they will be back again this summer to go on vacation with kids. And the stuffed bears have a backpack containing car games and a journal to record the traveling bear's adventures. And finally, Sully the Super Pup will be hidden somewhere in the children's area of the library. Sally, his sister, will have the clues. And each week, one winner who finds Sully will be selected to win a prize. The teen summer library club theme is Unmask. This summer, teens will unmask heroes of all kinds. Real heroes from the days past and heroes from today, fictional heroes in literature and film, superheroes in comics and film, and the heroes they may find in themselves. The kickoff occurs the same day as the youth summer library club, on June 13, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. Teens can stop by to get flyers, reading incentive game cards, stickers, and a free comic book. We'll also be following the same three reading periods that youth has set up as the foundation for the teen program this summer. During the first reading period, June 15 through July 3, teens will be able to read down their fines by reading for 15 minutes here at the library to receive $1 in library bucks that may be used to help pay off their fines. It doesn't make sense to ask kids to come to the reading club if they have fines and can't check out books. So this is one solution we have. On June 15, 23, and 30, teens may read for one hour each of these days to get $4 in library bucks each day for a potential total of $12 off of their fines. The gaming club meets weekly on Tuesdays for two hours, 5:30 to 7:30, and there will be a Yu-Gi-Oh! tournament on August 11 during which prizes will be given. And we are starting video gaming this summer also. We will have a gaming cart, 50-inch TV, and an Xbox debuting this summer for kids to play with at the library. The teen book discussion group, Paperbacked, will continue to meet monthly during the summer. The library strategic plan is never far from our minds, and I've added some programming that touches on one focus of the plan, the quality of life. Create Your Own Superhero is an online program where teens will be able to use various superhero characteristics to create their own superhero, then send them to us to post on our Facebook page. This sounds like a lot of fun, and it is, but this event also touches on computer literacy skills. The Masks and Super Workshop involves creating personalized masks from various materials. It is designed to help teens unmask their artistic side. The masks will be displayed in the teen area. And Buttons, Beads, and Bangles is a recycled craft program in conjunction with the Welty Center's Kelly Washburn. Kelly is our recycling hero and will be showing us how to be recycling heroes through art. We will also be promoting literacy, another goal of our strategic plan. The first event is a reading incentive program, which uses the Unmasked Bingo Card, which you see in the slide. Teens are encouraged to pick up a bingo card, complete all items in each square, and turn the card in. And of course, prizes are the ultimate gift, and we hope the kids will do this bingo game and enjoy the prizes that we have for them. Another literacy event encourages teens to unmask what is inside of themselves and learn to write their own fanfiction. Fanfiction is fiction written by a fan of and featuring characters from a particular TV series or movie or book. And the fanfiction workshop will happen during the second three-week period. There will also be interactive displays on the bulletin board in the teen area going on throughout the nine-week Summer Library Club period. And weekly word puzzles, brain teaser games that are based on the Unmasked superhero theme will be available in the teen area. Some summer programming is planned for both teens and adults. And I'll tell you about these simultaneous events when the teen and summer youth summer library clubs are taking place. The adult summer library club theme is Escape the Ordinary, and it will be happening when the teen and youth summer library clubs are also taking place. Summer's challenge to adult patrons is to escape the ordinary by exploring heroes, superheroes, and extraordinary people, places, and activities. The kickoff is, of course, as the other two sessions, June 13 from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. Adults will also be able to pick up reading incentive game cards, flyers, stickers, and free comic books. Adults are going to be encouraged to also participate in the summer reading program this summer. We'll continue with the very popular Fable Film Night. On the first Wednesday of each month, we'll be showing in a couple of days here, Unbroken. And then in July, we'll be showing The Theory of Everything. And we'll do a sci-fi thriller in August, which is Lucy. And these programs are all free to the public. We provide the movie experience without the cost. It's open to everyone. The State Line Genealogy Club will continue to meet the second Friday of each month at 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The fourth Tuesday and Wednesday book discussions will be meeting throughout the summer. And our new off-site event, Booked for Dessert, which is becoming very popular, will continue through the summer. This happens on the second Thursday of each month at 1:00 p.m. at Granada Hall Senior Center. The Focus on Youth series will also continue, but only in July. This summer, we'll be back every month, starting this fall. Several programs this summer will point toward keeping literacy and jobs and careers, two of our strategic goals, in mind. We are asked at the reference desk almost daily about how to use and troubleshoot e-readers and tablets. and tablets. So we decided to set aside a three-hour period of time each month this summer for patrons to ask questions one-on-one with two people from the library staff. We hope that this will really help people out with their tablet issues, which they just... There are so many different kinds of tablets, and the staff has to troubleshoot all of these tablets. And we're happy to do that one-on-one, so we'll get some really good results for them. We will continue to offer a monthly computer class in English, and we will be adding computer classes in Spanish this summer, from June 22 through August 4. The Spanish-language computer classes will be about a different subject each week. Promoting literacy is what the Summer Library Reading Incentive Program is all about. We had very positive feedback last summer about our bingo game. So adults will get to play tic-tac-toe this summer, as you can see from our card there. That's the tic-tac-toe card they'll be using. There'll be a prize drawing from the completed cards at the end of each reading period. And library staff will also be playing a reading incentive game with prizes given out at the end of each reading period. There's no limit to the number of cards that people can turn in. I mentioned earlier that there will be special programs for teens and adults. In fact, all of the adult programs I'm about to mention are open to teens. The first program is American Barn Stories on June 22. This will be the Southern Wisconsin/Northern Illinois premiere of the newest episode of American Barn Stories and Other Tales from the Heartlands, a program which is seen on PBS stations around the country. The creator of that program will be there to talk about how he does the creation of these stories. And we'll be seeing this, the newest episode, for the first time here in Beloit. This event is open to all ages. Then on July 16, Nathan Fuller of the Rock County Historical Society will be presenting Geocaching 101. Nate will talk about what geocaching is and how to participate in this fun sport. We will have our very own library cache and be added to the Rock County listing of caches in our area. This program anticipates a Rock County Historical Society initiative that will happen this fall. And because we're talking about superheroes this summer, why not have a comic book event? Dave from AK Comics will bring his expertise to the library on July 23 to appraise comic books at the Comic Book Roadshow, a title we borrowed from the Antiques Roadshow. And July is a big month. We'll end the month with a superhero movie marathon, July 27 through the 30. One superhero movie will be shown each night. This is for teens and adults. We'll be showing Iron Man 3, Thor: The Dark World, Captain America: The Winter Soldier, and Guardians of the Galaxy. And our last special program is called Life Hacking 101. Life hacking refers to any trick, shortcut, skill, or novelty method that increases productivity and efficiency in all walks of life. The program will point to some fun life hacks and encourage the attendees to bring along their own life hacking ideas to share with everyone there. Since the teens get an interactive space, the adults will also have one. We have a movable wall that will be put into place behind the reference desk and will be used in fun and inventive ways. The summer promises to be a fun and busy one for all ages at the library, and we'd like to thank our heroes, the city of Beloit, and Fable, our friends at Beloit Public Library, and our foundation for making it possible to provide summer library clubs for all ages in our community. Thank you.
Madam Vice President.
Thank you. I wish I could do cartwheels right now. I'm so excited. So many fantastic things going on. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Wow. I have to say, what a fantastic creative idea for allowing teens to read down their fines. Thank you so much, because we don't want to have those obstacles for kids to be able to check out books. It's a wonderful idea. And I wanted to ask real quick, because I want to make sure we're promoting this, because there's so many great programs. Are we getting flyers out to all the students through the schools? And how are we promoting? I just want to check on that real quick.
Youth flyers were taken out to the schools. They were promoted already. I think it was earlier in May, I think.
Great.
And the teen flyers, one of my staff and I went to the Beloit Memorial High School and did a program there during their four-period lunch hour. So we talked about all the programs that are coming up, and all students were invited to be there. We do have flyers at the library available also now.
Okay, great. Thank you. Do we have a really prominent link on our homepage? If not, could we get one for even a week or so, just to really promote it, since it's kicking off soon? June 13, right?
June 13 is the kickoff date, yes.
Thank you. Thank you to all the staff. What fantastic work. And to the friends. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I was informed... All right, item 11, the reports and the officers, we have none. So the last item is adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Hendricks, seconded by Slarker. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.